Yes.
Well, all right. Here it goes. It's gonna go ahead and kick off right about now. Well, Scott, thank you so much for joining me. And this is Carbon Matters livestream and this is Carbon County Commissioner Chris Lukasevich. And I'm joined by Scott Pompa, my friend and immediate past president of the Jim Thor area school district. And what I wanted to do, Scott, tonight is really, I want to retrace a little bit of history. Really going back to August of twenty sixteen, but then quickly move forward to January sixth of twenty twenty. On forward to really today and and where where I am at is or in my role of county commissioner. And I thought it would be most appropriate for me to bring someone in to to kind of draw out from me some of the questions maybe that many people have in regards to the experience. What was accomplished? What wasn't accomplished? Failure successes, things like that nature. And I think second to Maggie, who deserves great credit for for anything I've accomplished in my life to include my most recent accomplishment serving the residents of Carbon County. I think you know me and importantly, I believe you're one of the most informed citizens of Carbon County when it comes to obviously not simply the school board, but my area, my valley which which is county government. And and you have the perspective from being an informed citizen, actually also having served as an employer or serving as an employee of county government. So I think you you bring a lot of of perspective. I would like this to be as free flowing as you want it to be, but you're gonna guide the conversation and I'll be as frank and candid as as appropriate and necessary to make sure everyone understands, you know, my true feelings about all aspects of the occupation of being a political elected official here in Carbon County.
All right, Chris. Well, first of all, I want to thank you very much for this opportunity. It certainly is an honor and a pleasure to be sitting here with you tonight. And I really have to say it is, you know, with great I am happy for you that you have selected not to seek reelection, but at the same time, knowing that there's just several days left in your term as county commissioner, just to hit on some of the key things that you had just mentioned. And also, you know, the sadness that I am feeling as a Carbon County resident and just the the knowledge and the educational background that you have and just the way that you dug into everything, you know, with you you went at everything one hundred percent. And as as a county taxpayer and a county resident, I I believe that that is something that, you know, speaking on behalf of all the people in Carbon County is something that was truly appreciated. And I think I've told you this in other conversations. I've been a county employee. My first was employed by the county back in the nineteen eighties and worked at the correctional facility. And at the time, the commissioners back then were Mr. Albert Brady Cuck from Lee Hyton, Charles Will Donner here in Jim Thor, and the third commissioner at the time may have been deemed along, I'm not quite sure, but I just really remember Mr. Cuck and Mr. Will Donner as being highly respected men who really, I felt, had Carbon County's best interests. And from that point on, I remained involved in following along with county politics, kind of just watching how things were going. And when you mentioned, you know, twenty sixteen, I I still remember, you know, getting having you reach out to me and basically saying, hey, you want to come to breakfast some morning? And we started having these breakfast meetings with yourself and your wife Maggie, you know, and all of a sudden your political aspirations started to come out.
Yeah, but I think they really came out, Scott. You know, that was just probably getting back into the community. But you were kind of the motivation for me to go to my first commissioner's meeting. And that was, as best as I can recollect, was in August of twenty sixteen is when we went to the first meeting, sitting in the first row, and we were doing that as regularly as possible. So that really started the ball rolling to get me involved with one, you know, starting to look at county government to see what it was or was not doing for the residents of Carbon County. And, you know, thinking about, you know, my desire and part of one of two reasons why we came back here is to make a difference and give back to the community that had provided me so much. And I always said, you know, it goes back to us where we grew up on the on the front hill there, you know, I I always say my belief, my values, my work ethics were formed in those years of us as kids, you know, growing up through graduation in high school. So to me, August of twenty sixteen is where the the ball started rolling. And then it took off through conversations. And then if you roll forward all the way to twenty eight March twenty eighteen, that is where yourself, Jeannie and Billy helped us, you know, launch C four, which was, you know, the campaign that started at that moment.
Absolutely. Well, I'm I'm gonna take a few steps back. I'm gonna step back actually into the nineteen sixties when we were two children growing up on the lower end of Center Avenue. And we played a lot of army together, you know, and I always knew your brand of army was different than everyone else's, you know. So when I I I knew at a young age that you were definitely going to seek out the military. And what you have accomplished alone in the military was always something that I I was just marvel at and awestruck by actually because you went and from that little boy who played army with his neighborhood friend to becoming such a leader in the military and the accomplishments that you had. So when you had, we started having these discussions about, hey, I got some political aspirations, I'm interested in county government. And I thought, oh, my God, this is just gonna be amazing, you know, because what you had accomplished just in your military career and your educational career, you know, just I thought, this is the guy we need. This is what Carbon County needs. So bringing Chris Lukasevich into the mix, we started having some conversations, how are we gonna attack this? What are we gonna do? You know, and fortunately for you, you were very strong willed and and you were determined, I'm gonna do this. There were barriers that were placed up against you. The party was not very welcoming, you know, and you just had this determination that I'm gonna get through this. And, you know, of course, in the primary, you knocked off you know, a seated incumbent and and Tom Gerhard, you know, which was kind of a shocker and from that point on, I mean, you you had the support of your family. You had also the support of Larry and Mary Ann.
Mary Ann, absolutely.
Who were incredible and getting some things done for you and very grassroots, knocking on doors, going out and meeting people, making those phone calls was really rather phenomenal as far as what you were able to accomplish.
Yeah, I think the one other aspect there is the ability to recognize the power of social media, right? Because there's no doubt, you know, and and you know, to me, I I think about what I have done leveraging social media starting back in about twenty eighteen. I mean, in twenty eighteen is actually when I started live streaming, you know, with my iPhone commissioners meetings. So that kind of got the ball moving in regards to leveraging social media.
Absolutely. Not only did you leverage it when you were mounting your campaign and you brought it to, you know, you brought the whole full big picture into county government, live streaming meetings, which we're never live streaming for, you know. So it was something that definitely, you know, just wrote off the coattails of your campaign, right in the county government. And I have to tell you, there's been many a times when I tuned in and watched the commissioners meeting where people didn't have it. I see people who come to the meetings on a weekly basis. I mean, you could actually watch this from home now, but there is a different atmosphere of being there in person and, you know, watching through a screen. But just, you know, that whole aspect of the social media and, you know, what, how you used it to your advantage and your leverage. But, you know, there is also a downside to social media.
Of course.
You live by the sword and you die by the sword, you know. And I think both of us in the in the rooms that we were in saw that, hey, one day someone will love you and the next day someone will hate you.
Yeah, you go from hero to zero, just like that. You you really do.
Yeah, it's all depending on what your position is and whether they agree with you. But let's let's face it, in politics, you, everybody has to kind of agree to disagree, you know. Now, here's the one thing that I don't quite understand though, Chris, and you lived it more than I did is you know, you got three county commissioners, okay? And you would really think everyone was elected to do the best for the county. But at times, you know, there's like the inner fighting, you know, and just so much of it was just formed on, well, this is my belief, you know, where is it really gonna benefit the citizens of Carbon County? Or do we need to get into a power struggle over this? And I saw those power struggles and I participated in my own, you know, on the school board. But the school board is nine members, you know, county government is three. You have three people who make up the entire county of Carbon and its communities. And you have these three people who are elected to make the decisions that are the best for Carbon County. And going into to this, I really was very comfortable thinking that Chris Lukasevich is going to think of the people of Carbon County. And your your slogan of if it matters to you, it matters to me is something that I always thought if he says it, it's true. And I know if you're gonna bring it to his attention, I guarantee you there will be some follow up on that, you know.
And I I took that I took that to heart. There there were, you know, I actually had three kind of little sayings that I always kept on my dry erase board, but I always went back to thinking, you know, who does this matter to? And if it matters to you, it matters to me. And that doesn't mean I'm gonna agree with you. That doesn't mean I'm necessarily going to to carry your water through realization, but I'm gonna take it seriously and I'm gonna examine it. I'm going to analyze it and make a determination if what you are pushing, what you desire is in the best interest of the public overall. And there's times where people came to me and said, but you said it, it matters to you. I said, it matters to me because it's your opinion. It doesn't mean at the end of the day, after I do my assessment and analysis, that I'm gonna determine that it's ultimately in the best interest of the citizens of Carbon County. And if it's not, well, then I'm I'm gonna reject that idea and look for maybe a better way to meet some of the needs of of that particular resident while not simply, you know, taking the and running with their ball if it's not gonna do great good.
I completely agree. And and that is what I saw from you. In fact, I had the opportunity on several occasions over this past four years to you know, be in your office. And and I'm going there right now. We're gonna we're gonna go backwards in a little bit. But I want to hit on this while it's fresh in my mind. When you mentioned those those whiteboards, those dry erase boards, every time I ever went into your office from pretty much your first week, that thing was full of what you wanted to see get done. So what what is left on that whiteboard today is what I'd really like to know.
Well, that's good because what I had done is, and I'll explain the dry erase board for those who might not be familiar with them. It surprised me if you're one of the eighteen hundred sixty five followers on on my Facebook page or my YouTube and stuff like that. You've seen those pictures of of those dry erase boards regularly being posted. Because one was which would have been over my on my left side as I was sitting at my desk, those were the more permanent items that I wanted on the board to include my priorities. And while I had an overall vision for what I wanted to accomplish, and I posted this, you know, four years prior to taking office, or excuse me, you know, four years prior to today, you know, well before, as my campaign was starting, each year I would put up to ten priorities for that particular year. And again, I published them not only on my dry erase board, but then I would broadcast them uh uh to the public on on social media. And then directly behind me, that was kind of my brainstorming board. What was I thinking about today to or something I wanted to address and analyze in the immediate moment? And I will tell you, because it was also public, some of it was encoded. You know, little codes and only I, and it's not simply my poor penmanship, but it was actually just little things that only if I read it, I knew it. Because I also knew there were cleaning ladies and other people who were going into my office. And, you know, my saying is do not trust, confide, or go native in anyone in county government, you know. So I I did have to be somewhat sensitive to that. But that brings us to the point you're kind of starting from the back. What what was left undone? And there was a couple small, small things. And they're not necessarily from, I don't know if you recall, I had something called my day one motions. But when I had my vision for Carbon County, I also had achieving that vision, I put twenty four motions that I would put forth on on day one. And and I utilize this as my roadmap. And and really, the only ones that are on here that I don't think I fully addressed and I'm somewhat disappointed in. But I did ultimately ran out of time, ran out of bandwidth. One, I wanted to reduce the number of P O boxes. That's a little thing, but there are twenty one P O boxes that were continue to cost county government a considerable amount of money, right? Like I always said, we shouldn't be doing the post office's job. The post office job is to deliver the mail. They should be delivering the mail. We shouldn't have county employees spending fifteen minutes every day going to pick up mail at P O boxes that we really had no requirement for. So why, while I ultimately, it would have been in year two, Wayne agreed to go ahead and have it assessed, the 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 practicality. I was ne- never able to get it up on my priority list of things I needed to get done to actually finish up having a third party come in and look at it and say, okay, of these twenty one, we could get rid of seventeen P O boxes.
Sure.
So 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 that was the one. And the the other one was evaluations of employees. And and I ultimately, finally, about two years ago, and I want the focus first and foremost on department heads. So what I did in twenty twenty one, I evaluated all twenty one department heads that fall under the Board of Commissioners. I took them in at the beginning of twenty twenty one. I said, let's talk about your year. What are you gonna achieve? How are you going to get there? And then I said, well, if you have any stutters along the way, let's talk. And I will get you the do my best to get you the resources to achieve what you want to achieve. And then informally throughout the year, I would attempt to get down and just talk, hey, how are things going? Do you have any issues? Do you have any problems? Or if I had a problem with the department head during the year, you know, on the spot correction. Hey, I noticed we're having a problem here. What are you going to do to resolve it? How can I help you resolve that issue? And then at the end of twenty twenty one, I brought all twenty one department heads into my office, boom, 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 and gave them an evaluation and filed it. Because the issue is at the department head level, the way it works in theory is the chief clerk, the county administrator is the direct supervisor for twenty one department heads. And you know, there's no realistic ways anyone can supervise or effectively evaluate twenty one department heads. So what I actually ended up developing, I thought, well, why aren't the county commissioners evaluating department heads, right? So we of course should be evaluating the chief administrator. But what my plan was, and again, that's one I didn't get to, is each commissioner on year one, when they come in, each of them is assigned five department heads to assess in year one. And then the chief clerk takes six. So that's fifteen plus six is twenty one. So for that year, I would have, let's say, you know, planning, tax assessment, tax claim, aging, public defender. And throughout the year, I would evaluate that person, counsel them, provide them guidance. And then boom, at the end of the year, do their final evaluation. And then we would rotate. Now I would take Rocky's five, and then Wayne would take my five, and Ellie would take, you know, so. So you'd so over four years, you got to know in depth every department head and every department. And they were all, they all would be evaluated on a regular basis. And then I felt if you set the example for the department heads and you hold them to task, they will effectively and efficiently start assessing their subordinates. But again, you know, training is a part of an issue, right? You don't have leadership, good leadership development, you know. So again, you know, you would have to coach them along, you know, how do you bring someone into your office and say, well, you're doing a great job in this area. However, in this area, you need improvement. And, you know, it's very difficult for people who are untrained to do that.
It is. It is. It is very difficult. And you raise some real valid points here. And the fact that you took the initiative, I think, was great. However, I think asking county commissioners to evaluate employees is a very difficult task in itself. And I think you know, probably somewhere along the lines, and I know the H R department in the county is very small. But I I I think at some point, the H R department is gonna have to grow. I believe every county employee does have a job description, correct? So your job description basically is telling you what your job is, what's involved in your job and how you're supposed to do your job. And that is how you should actually be evaluated. Now, where does that evaluation come into play is the is the key part. Should it be the commissioners? No. Should it be the chief clerk? Probably not. But you gotta find a way to find maybe a department head oversee certain departments, you know, and go about it that way. But that right now, it's all hindsight, because that is one of the, you know, one of the things that certainly.
But but think about the importance of evaluations. If you believe in merit based pay increases, unless you have an honest evaluation system, you truly can't make, you know, objective decisions on merit based increases.
Chris, that's a great point. You really can. And and the other side of it too is evaluations are also a tool to help an employee grow and learn, you know. So that's the other side of it. It's not always all about the money part of it. It's also investing into that employee and saying, hey, you know, you're the person that's chosen for this job. We want you to grow. Your job description is this and, you know. So, you know, coming from somebody who was a former supervisor for many years and a department manager, I know how valuable those tools were to me. And, you know, it luckily, the system that I came out of was merit based, you know. So when you say merit based, you know, it it certainly, it resonates with me and I understand it. And I believe the county has a ways to go with that. Will that occur now? I really, I I don't know. I know that it will.
I would say then, let's stop faking it. If if we're not gonna have an effective enforced evaluation policy and program, get rid of it. You know, I don't like finger drills. If we're not gonna use it, lose it. You know, it it's that simple. So again, you you have to make a choice or the the county has to make a choice. Otherwise, you know, get get rid of the policy that they have.
Well, before we move on from that, my last comment on that, Chris, is, you know, as I stated earlier, I was employed by the county since the mid nineteen eighties. And this is something that has plagued them since then, where employees are not fairly properly evaluated. Employees are, you know, being told they're doing a good job when they're probably not doing a good job at all, you know, only because you've never been properly evaluated. And you know, we do have job descriptions in place, but yeah.
Yeah. So those were really the two out of about twenty four primarily or or set up initially set up objectives that I had set. And a lot of those, again, ended up being achieved with the exception of those two. There might be one or two others out there.
Well, just let me ask you though, why the one with the P O boxes to me seems like an overreacher, you know? What what is the resistance there that people want to go pick up their own mail? I mean, why couldn't you have one designated person go over to the post office, pick the mail up and then?
You mean the union postal clerk that we already have as an employee?
Yes.
How about that? How about that? You know, so it's not like you had to hire an individual. You may want to give that individual, if their job description for some reason excluded picking up mail for the entirety of county government, you may have to change the job description and pay the person a buck or two more. But in order to save sixty thousand dollars a year, I think it would be well worth that in in investment. I I think the 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 where does the resistance come from? I think part of it isn't just simply resistance because of who the messenger is, but it comes to the fact that there are three branches of county government, the courts, the row offices, and then the departments under the Board of Commissioners. And they want to continue to control every aspect. And they're I suspect the first thing about sixteen twenty rights, that has to do with managing my office. To manage my office, I have to have a P O box. You know, what I would do, I would say, you know what, then I'm gonna start cutting your budget. As the commissioners who have the authority for budget, well, I'm gonna take away the money for that particular line item. You know, again, you have to use a forcing mechanism. Or, you know what, I'm not gonna sign a contract for X for you, because only the commissioners can sign a contract until, you know.
Well, sadly, that is where that's where the politics comes into play and it kind of all gets bogged down. But I would honestly believe that anybody who is an elected official, which includes your row officers, and it even includes your courts, your judges are also elected. These are people who've been elected by the people of Carbon County. And they should be looking at any task at all to reducing costs, you know.
And I only actually had one row officer who came and said, I would like to get rid of mine. Only one who was enthusiastic about it. And so, and again, I thought, again, just like in many organizations, you have a central mail room where all the mail comes to. You have a mail clerk who, right, separates it out, which that mail clerk already does, right, right there in the hallway between the commissioners conference room and I T and stuff like that. And now all it would be a matter of of it being distributed. Now, one or two offices, you know, might have one office might be challenged by that elections because of the amount of mail, mostly with mail in ballots. That's a tough one. To me, the post office should be delivering that one directly. Forty four Siskel Hannah Street, that address should get daily delivery. Again, shouldn't be our election clerks going up to pick up ballots coming in, coming out. That should be no postal delivery direct.
Great point. Yes, absolutely. That that is a very, very good point. You know, it's something that we could actually get off on a another whole discussion on, you know, the whole mail in ballot.
Oh, my gosh, yeah. Oh, my gosh, yeah.
So much, so much over the last four years has, you know, come to light just with mail-in ballots.
Absolutely. You're in the county, you're doing and across and stuff like that. I, I think Scott, it's important to understand, I think it, it, you were talking about, I'll call it my work ethic or I'm gonna get the job done. You know, I am a nose to the grindstone type of person. And that has its good and bad side. Uh, the good side is I give a hundred and ten percent. I would, and, and I get things done, you know? And again, doesn't mean I, I move every, everything through realization. Cause some things getting done is the fact that, you know what? That was a dumb idea, right? And, and you drop those dumb ideas.
Sure.
But again, it comes at the expense of other things, like quality of life issues with, with family. You know, I'm a nose to the grindstone person, so you know what? I'm not big into personal relationships. I'm, I'm, I don't go to work to make friends or, or anything, you know? I'm not trying to meet with people who I'm gonna go out and have a beer with after. Where I'm there to do the, the citizens' work, their job. And, and when I'm done, I'm done, you know? So that kind of ties into my personality, because again, you don't see me laughing and smiling a lot. What you see me is down doing the work.
Absolutely. Always carrying a book with you to write something in, take notes and uh, that, that is something that will stick in my mind forever. And that, that you did prior to even being elected.
Right, it was. And you know, that was, that was ingrained into me in my, my military career, right? You always had a notebook and pen, right? Cause you never could simply rely on your memory. And when someone said something important that needed to be done, you know, go ahead, back it up, not only in your brain housing group, but go ahead and write it down so you can reference uh, uh, back to it and stuff like that.
And you know, I think all leaders have stupid ideas. It's just the real good leaders that realize that they're stupid.
Right.
Um, there are other people that hold on to stupid ideas only because maybe they're trying to please somebody else, you know? And uh, that one of the points that you, you just made was about your nose to the grindstone was when you had said that you were gonna run for office. I always looked at you as this is a guy who's not doing this to be somebody. This is a guy who's doing this to do what's right for Carbon County.
Yeah.
And you know, not everyone has agreed. I mean, I've followed your social media and I see some people like even the stuff to Machunk Lake Park, which I thought was a great idea.
Oh, yeah.
People had issues with buses picking kids up and taking them to Machunk Lake Park, you know? It's like, wow, why, why would you? I mean, God, these kids, get them out of their house. They're sitting at home on their electronic devices. We're seeing how bad social media is for mental health of children and teens, you know? Uh, and here we have an opportunity to get them out and get outside, get some fresh air, go spend the day at the lake.
Right. And I think it's so hard for us because, you know, growing up, obviously here in Jim Thorpe, we had bus, a bus that we used all the time.
Yeah.
Uh, we went with one or two chaperones in a school bus with forty, forty-five kids. Maybe out to Hickory Run because we belonged to Kemmer Park Summer Program and stuff like that. You know, so to hear, you know, people who, who are resistant to allowing our, our youth to mature and, and develop, you know, i- is kinda concerning. Again, you know, things have changed in the world and you do have to take uh, certain cautions or precautions and stuff like that. But I too get surprised sometimes by uh, positions like that.
Well, that was one that really kind of floored me, to be honest with you, as I was watching that whole thing unfold. And I just thought this was really great and I saw that there was opposition to it and opposition from, you know, your people that are sitting up
Yeah.
In the, the, the three seats, the two seats next to you.
Yeah.
You know, and oh, this is not a good idea. How is, how is it not a good idea?
And unfortunately, we lost about five weeks of that program. But it ended up being, according to the assessment that Lana and Carbon Transit did, extremely successful to the point where they're looking at starting next year, starting, yeah, twenty twenty four, probably mid-year to make Machunk Lake Park a regular part of one of their routes.
Yes.
You know, and the story that A J, the planner uh, 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 gives publicly is about that, that one individual who for the first time in their life, and they've, or you know, their time in Carbon County, they didn't even know Machunk Lake Park existed. And they got on the bus, I believe it was in Lansford, the bus took them there. And she spent the day at Machunk Lake Park. You know, so again, you make it one person at a time. So I, I think the, the beach bus will probably continue, you know?
Well, I, I hope it does. I mean, it may, it may not, but I really, and, and it's one of those situations where I, where I can go back to and just repeat myself from earlier where I said, when you are elected to that position, you don't get into these personal struggles. Oh, that's Chris's idea. I think it's stupid.
Right.
Where actually, when you think of the big picture and how it's going to benefit people in Carbon County, it's, it's a no brainer.
Right. Well, I, I will tell you on sixth January twenty twenty with my day one motions, that, that's, that's was the resistance, not these are good ideas.
Yeah.
But that, these ideas come from this individual.
Correct.
And therefore
Yes.
W- w- we will oppose them. We won't second them or, or whatever the case may be.
Well, the surprising part for me, Chris, was to see that actually play out and, and come, you know, to that head.
Yeah.
Because I think we experienced quite a bit of that in your whole election campaign.
Sure.
You know?
Yeah.
And then to see that near now, we have the three elected officials and it's still going to, going to continue. Was a bit, a bit mind boggling to me, but it, it was, it was that thing that really made me realize politics can be downright ugly.
Yeah.
Because sometimes it's, you know, you will overlook what is best for everyone because it is the idea of this person or we didn't like him from day one.
But did you know on sixth January twenty twenty, you could have sat at home? And I think someone and watched that on social media. Now, I will tell you on sixth January, that was coming off of my iPhone still. And for many months after that, that was coming on. But you know, to me, that was one of my greatest accomplishments, one of my two, was transparency in government.
Oh, absolutely.
And what I did. Now, on sixth January, the two commissioners voted against live streaming. Or didn't, or they probably didn't second the motion might be more accurate. They, they opposed live streaming meetings. So there's never like a good emergency to take advantage of. So what happened when as soon as COVID started?
Yeah.
That I knew I had it.
How about?
Then boom, I, I knew I would make it happen. So I just took advantage. Cause otherwise, I truly believe we still wouldn't be live streaming today. If it wouldn't be for the fact that COVID came and I was able to take advantage of that and force it through.
Chris, that is a great answer and that was one of the things I was gonna ask you about because we had experienced the COVID thing. You know, in the county level and myself on the school district level. And some of the stuff that we walked away with was rather amazing with what we were able to accomplish with the assistance of COVID.
Right.
For as bad as it was, it made some things better.
Yeah.
And I, I have to say, now that I think of it in hindsight, you were probably correct that had it not been for COVID, these live streamings probably would have been.
Oh, they, they wouldn't, you know? And, and then I found too, then I was able to take it to the next level. Because when we did the renovations, quote unquote, the renovations, it was basically a complete rebuild of forty four Sesquahana Street. I was able to get all that technology into that space also. And at the same time, that's when I was able to push through the motion that all public meetings would be livestreamed. So today, all public meetings are expected to be livestreamed. The only one we have a little challenge with, and I still livestream myself, is the, the Machunk Lake Park Parks and Rec. Uh, just because they don't have their own system out there yet. So other than that, all our public meetings are livestreamed today.
As they should be.
Yeah, you know, but what's important to that though, it's not simply the live streaming. Cause I, I love the transparency issue, cause that's so important to me. It was the fact, uh, my colleagues voted against, again, from my vision uh, publishing the agenda twenty-four hours prior. They initially, they voted against that. They voted against having the minutes published forty-eight hours after they were approved. It took me for the agendas, I was able to get that in because ended up being that the state was gonna end up doing it eventually.
Okay.
So I was able to fo- force that through. And I think in year two, it may have been. And then the minutes, I think they just capitulated to, cause I said, you know, forty-eight hours after approved. But what was happening, you know, people, as you know, Scott, as we were going to the board of commissioners meeting, we would show up having no idea what was gonna be on the agenda. And then they would hand us the agenda when we stepped in, you know, five minutes prior to the meeting. You had no chance to prepare uh, for the meeting.
Yeah.
You know, and that's why it was so important to get those agendas at least twenty-four hours prior.
Absolutely. I, it's a bit sketchy to me. It seemed to me like, one, what are you trying to hide? And two is like, uh, where's the uh, sunshine violation here?
Yeah.
Like this should all be out to the public prior to a meeting.
Yeah.
Cause how are the, how is the public to be informed?
Yep.
And then come to a meeting, if you're gonna have public comment and the opportunity to hand me an agenda as I walk in the door and then ask me if I have public comment on something.
Well.
It's a lot easier to prepare, prepare for the day in advance.
Exactly. Well, it's interesting, y- you mentioned the Sunshine Act. Uh, because I, I hosted a great roundtable discussion uh, with folks from D C E D. One of the leading organizations in Pennsylvania brought Marta Gouger in also. We had a great discussion on it. But talking about transparency in government, I went back and reviewed online minutes from the board of commissioners for like seven years of minutes. And understand, there's about fifty meetings a year. So you're talking about three hundred and fifty sets of minutes. And what I noticed was there was never a no vote. So you're talking and you, the, the motions are numbered throughout the year. And I can't remember how many hundreds of motions are our year, but there are literally hundreds. So you have, let's say, three hundred motions a year that are made, right? Then you have three commissioners who have the opportunity to say yay or nay. So now you have nine hundred opportunities each year to have one no vote. Over seven years, now you're talking, you know, five thousand, six hundred opportunities for a no vote. Never a no vote.
Wow.
So wait, how can these three individuals?
Yeah.
Agree
Agree on everything.
Fifty-six hundred times.
Wow.
You know? Again, but I did, it raises a concern, an issue about transparency.
Sure.
And, and what has taken place behind closed doors? N- now, at the same time, and again, this is gonna sound self-serving. I had not seen during my time in county government abuse of executive sessions. I have seen where we, in executive sessions, we would start going in a direction, but then step back from it. You know, meaning no decisions are made, other than what's gonna be on the agenda.
Right.
You know, and, and that's a tough, as you know, that's a really tough to do sometimes, you know? To stay, hey, we're not making a decision, yet at the same time, as you present your position, you tend to be communicating
Yes.
how, how you're gonna vote.
So the, the Well, absolutely. Something that used to occur regularly was, oh, i- in a school board executive session, well, can we do a straw poll?
Oh, right.
You know, well, can we do a straw poll? Well, basically, yeah, we're gonna find out where everybody stands on this and you're making your decision there.
Right there.
Whether you're gonna go out and into the public and
Yeah.
You know, stick to it or not, but.
Well, I, I will tell you some of my strategy though, uh, because at, at, at times I, I had to make a point. I would play devil advocate in the meeting in order just to, I'm not gonna say disguise with my actual position. One, I was doing it because again, I was seriously wanting to look at both sides. But yet at the same time, I did wanna use shock and awe at times in the public meeting. You know, by not seconding a motion or actually voting no. And then getting the opportunity during the discussion period on that motion to explain why I was either for or against it. And again, with my colleagues not knowing previously, you know, what I was more inclined to. You know, to kind of catch them off balance. I mean, you might say, well, that's part of the politics of it. Okay, to me, it's part of the strategy of, of trying to, uh, to achieve what's in the best interest of the citizens of Carbon County. And also at times to bring out maybe shortcomings and deficiencies in your colleagues that the public wouldn't otherwise see. And they need to understand that who you see in public isn't the same person in private.
Absolutely.
You know, yeah, and you see that a lot.
Well, I saw, I actually, now that you say that strategy was used, absolutely, it was used by you ma- many a time. And, and I'm thinking of the, the last meeting that I think I watched was the budget meeting.
Yeah.
Where um, Commissioner Note Stein wanted a tax increase and a little bit at a time.
Yep.
Now funny, that's what we hear at the school all the time and we haven't increased taxes in fourteen years. I can't even the Jim Thorpe School District. But you know, we always get the recommendation in the four years I've been on the board, increase a little bit at a time, increase a little bit at a time. So the commissioner made his pitch about, oh, we need a tax increase, but if we just do it a little bit. And I think at this point, you would, you know, you were kind of just letting them go back and forth.
Yeah.
And then you voiced your opinion, maybe it should be a little bit at a time. And he took that as like, oh, wow.
Well, yeah, yeah, but, but what I was saying, it should be a little bit at the time. But, but what I was saying, a little bit at the time, not the tax increase, but building up, let's say the reserve or what I always refer to as the carryover money that gets us through January through the end of April, when there's very little to no tax revenue coming in because it doesn't correspond. We're no longer in our penalty period or any type of the coupon periods and stuff like that. So that's right, that's still
No inflow of money, yeah.
Right. So that's what, see, he thought I was referring specifically to taxation. I wasn't referring to the tax. I was saying you need to increase, again, what I was, I was trying to communicate was you need to get that reserve back up, maybe a million or two more dollars from where it is today. Because over the past four years, other than the nineteen point eight percent tax increase that Rocky and Wayne reaffirmed on sixth January twenty twenty by not reopening the budget, which I proposed. You know, Rocky and I have stood fast for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four and, and prevented a tax increase and rather thought it was most appropriate. And, and for me to stick to my, my going in position of no tax, I would not vote for any tax increase. I'd vote for figuring ways to raise more revenue other than taxes. And I would look for ways to reduce the budget versus raising taxes. So for four years, we haven't had a tax increase, but we have drawn down our, our carryover to the point where next year for twenty twenty-five, unless there's significant cuts and there shouldn't be any issue about doing that, there's gonna have to be a tax increase. Uh, I proposed this year initially for the budget, let's freeze the budget at last year's. That didn't happen. Again, that was pushed aside. But again, so you either have to freeze it or you have to raise revenue. And I say raise revenue other than taxes until it's absolutely necessary. And as you know, sooner or later, it's gonna become necessary.
So on January twen- January sixth, twenty twenty, when you made that proposal to reduce taxes on senior citizens, I believe.
That was another one.
Uh huh.
Yeah. And it was, again, my colleagues don't read the fine print. They don't listen. What it said is to assess the viability of a senior tax rebate program, which would have reduced for senior citizens sixty-six and over who have ten years residence in Carbon County and have paid property taxes for a minimum of a ten years. So I didn't want someone coming from New Jersey, you know, tomorrow and, and get the same benefits of someone who's been here forever. Right. Each year, you would reduce their county taxes a quarter mil. Now, if they were a widow or a widower, it would be point five zero or a half a mil reduction each year. Now, I looked at the uh, the actuary tables and stuff like that. So normally, you know, a gentleman is gonna last until he's about seventy-four, seventy-five, a woman till seventy-nine. You know, so I did all those uh, uh, numbers. So I had a pretty good sense that, that we, we could have pulled it off for senior citizens.
So where was the county gonna make up that lost revenue?
Huh? That, that, they were gonna have to make it up by either reducing expenditures or finding other revenue streams to do that unquestionably, tightening the belt. But again, I would rather have senior citizens still in their homes than being put out in the street. You know, and, and bottom line, it was You know, and and bottom line, it was a humanitarian gesture. Because senior citizens are struggling to meet the challenge of affordable housing. Cause just think about the number of short term rentals that Carbon County has gained in the last ten years. So all those short term rentals have taken away. Right, affordable housing.
Yes.
Right? The other issue is, you know, as as you get older, you know, you don't need a three and a four bedroom home. You know, so but you're paying taxes on that. And so we we have to help senior citizens, right? So they're talking about, well, you know, let the state do it. Because there's a little rebate program. I think it was six fifty a year. Now it's a little bit higher. I said, you know what? I'm gonna take care of our own citizens.
Yeah.
You know, don't count on Doyle Heathley and Argol to do what we should be doing.
Sure.
Taking care of our citizens. And it was a rebate program and not a tax reduction, because a rebate program you could do. A a tax reduction because of the law, uh, we we couldn't do on our own, but we could do a rebate.
Are there any counties in the Commonwealth that currently do any programs like that?
You know, I I honestly don't know, but I had a legal team from Lancaster County. Who actually pro bono reviewed all of my day one motions for me. You know, they invested a lot of time pro bono, a highly uh uh recognized. A law firm from from Lancaster County. And every one of those was at least within the realm of the possibility from a legal perspective. You know, now they didn't go in and look at the dollar figures and stuff like that. But again, what I said, Scott, was assess the viability. I didn't say do it.
Yeah.
Because that's not what I do. I don't go and say, do it. Almost any motion I make, it's about, let's assess it. And then if it comes back, then based upon the results of the assessment, then let's vote on it if we should move forward.
Chris, uh, to me, that's just unbelievable. And I and it's again, a testament to you and the work that you did. You just didn't go into anything and throw it out there and say, we're gonna try this. You actually had people look into it. Check it, check it out to see if it was something that could actually be pulled off, you know? I'm very concerned moving forward because I don't think we're gonna have anyone else that does anything like this, you know?
Well, well, I hope we do though, you know, again, I'm I'm not.
I I I do too, but.
No.
You know?
It's not a known, uh, it isn't a known unknown, actually. It is a known known what's coming in.
Yeah.
And so there's nothing that shows me.
Yeah.
That that depth of analysis wo- will take place. Yeah, I I can't be be hopeful like you on that one. Yeah, I don't see it.
Yeah.
I I mean, I would also say, you know, on my sixty some, what I call passionately assertive driven impact. So items that I had a decisive role in. Uh, successfully moving forward. One of them that worries me most, and it probably isn't significant to the residents of Carbon County. Is written correspondence, formal written correspondence. When something left that office that was going to the governor, that was going. Uh. Let's say to the board. That would look at prisoners and consider their early release from prison. Those types of formal letters, there's only one person who drafted those. You know?
Yeah.
And quite frankly, I'm gonna talk as humbly as I can. And I'll tell you what, and I am no brain surgeon, you know, I'm a simple graduate at Jim Thorpe High School. Those documents were written by Chris DeCevage and they were impactful documents. And unfortunately, uh, no one of colleagues. Has that ability to effectively communicate in writing. And and that does concern me, you know, it does concern.
It's it's much deeper than that, Chris. Anyone who had taken the time to attend a meeting or watch a meeting on live stream just knew by. You know, the way that you researched in your college on things.
Yeah.
I I think everybody has to be concerned that that element is now removed, you know? Because I, as I said earlier, I have watched county government. I watched all forms of government. I mean, local, national, you know, I saw, I watched our borough in action. The township in action that I live in now, the school district in action. And to get somebody up there that can actually think things through and have knowledge and. Do the work, the insight.
Yeah.
To learn about this stuff. Most people don't do that, you know? And and as as a resident of the county, that is something that I believe I and many others will truly miss. Because it's not there.
Okay, well, I think one thing, and I've already seen it playing out, uh, probably the greatest travesty. Uh, that had occurred uh on the macro level, and I'll give you one on the micro level. The failure to proceed with the purchase of four ten Center Avenue. The failure to proceed with it with the offer that Joe Bennett made to the county. To lease to own that building. We're already seeing where that would have been about a six to seven million dollar project, reduced from about nine point five. That would include with the additional parking. Uh, you're already seeing one office down at five twenty five Iron Street, children and youth. Has already cost over three and a half million dollars. It's only two thirds done.
Yeah.
Two thirds done, you know? Yet up there on the hill, we were gonna bring aging in. We're gonna bring workforce development in there, yet still have four to five thousand. Potential additional square footage for a, for life, for office space, potential office space. That would literally last the county for untold decades into the future.
Well, I have to, I have to agree, and I was involved because that was a school district owned property.
Yeah.
And I know that we had, you know, entered an agreement and leased space to the county.
Yeah.
And there is no doubt that while the county was leasing that space, it was providing, you know, a great opportunity for. Them to expand, stay local, you know? And I really thought that that building purchase should have gone through. I believe that's another one where. The thought process became.
Yeah.
You know, hunkered down by something.
Yeah.
But uh.
Well, you know, what what part of the other thing was it's not that I had mentioned on that? Even if we would have just kept that for this eighteen plus month courthouse project. And then sold it after, we'd make money. We are adding six to seven months. We are adding millions of dollars on to this courthouse project. Because we didn't have the space to empty the courthouse for about eleven months. Therefore, we are paying for eighteen months and just in. Money alone for consulting, we're paying over thirty thousand dollars a month.
Wow.
Just for consulting.
Yeah.
That isn't talking about all the additional costs associated with projects being expanded. You know, that there are add-ons provided by all the the primes and and subs. We we're losing millions of dollars uh because of that, you know, that's just the reality.
Uh, that is the reality of it. And I I don't really think it took a very smart person to really figure out that. There it sat.
Yeah.
This is our answer and we left to get away.
Yeah, so now we're we're contracting out for snow removal. We have our maintenance and I T guys, when there's an issue, now they're spending twenty to twenty five minutes on the road. Having to go down there, right? Once you start decentralizing government, what happens? All these additional costs. Now you're hiring additional cleaning ladies. Now you're hiring, you know, your maintenance, your I T staff, any of the services. Now you have another sheriff who has to be down there, you know? So all these additional costs, you know, you know, and just the the O and M cost of of independent facilities. Compared to bringing people together in an updated upgraded, uh, basically a a new new building.
Yeah.
You know, uh, time spent on the road when children and youth have to come to court.
Sure.
You know, again, you just use invaluable time.
Why send them into the next community is beyond me when they could have been just blocked up the road from the courthouse.
You know, the other building I wish, and I did see it un- until too late, it came available. Uh, and it was just within what, the last twelve, fifteen months or so. Uh, across from uh Immaculate Conception Church or where the Immaculate Conceptions will. Yeah, exactly. I think that would have been another great building.
Sure.
You know, the problem is you didn't have parking right there except for, you know, you'd have to work out an arrangement with the church. But I thought that would have been another great building, you know, even like to bring aging back into to Jim Thorpe. You know?
So while we're on this topic very quick, you can make this brief if you want, but we're we're discussing buildings. And as long as I've been following county politics, there have been. Bundles and bundles of money placed into building upgrades and it just never seems to end. Now, I get it, you're limited down there, you're expanding, you're bursting at the seams. But at what, at at what point do we realize? We're putting out all this money for buildings and then I'm thinking of Commissioner Arner, who is determined. To give every employee a raise, okay? And you have employees who are disgruntled, who often bring up, they're gonna go put, you know, millions of dollars into another building. But they won't give us a dollar or fifty an hour, you know? So uh, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, well, I think it's a fair argument. And 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 I think what we should be providing individuals. Are not Taj Mahal spaces, but sufficient spaces to do their jobs in a comfortable environment. That gives you hopefully the the slack or or excess money. In order to do things like salaries. However, my argument would be a building, quote unquote. Is a one time, one year investment. You spend three million dollars, you pay for it. Salary increases perpetuate forever. You know, so it's somewhat apples and oranges, but I would rather invest in people. Than I would in buildings and facilities. Uh, it's just like in schools, right? You know, I would rather invest in good teachers. Than I necessarily would in the building itself.
Sure.
Because I think you can learn in a a simple uh a facility, not a Taj Mahal.
Yep.
Like facility.
Well, most, most places today, you see people working in little cubicles, you know? Everybody gets their little space and some of them are tiny, you know, and that's what they have to work, that's their work environment.
Yeah.
You know, depending on the job you do, if you're a secretary or something like that, that's pretty much all the space that you do need.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Now, investing into people is something that, you know, the county has high turnover. You know, they've had for years. Most of the time to do, I I'll ask you this because I really don't know. Do they do exit interviews with employees when they leave?
You know, I, they do discuss, have informal conversations in H R. And I I believe that is truly more recently in the last year or so. I I mean, but they've always been informal, so there isn't a checklist of, here are the ten questions.
There's no paper trail, but you'll see a commonality.
Right, so when you come in for your final checkout.
Yeah.
Sit down and please.
Why are you leaving? What could we have done differently?
Exactly. And that's something I talked to the new H R director and and we see that's a shortcoming and deficiency. But importantly, that's why, you know, something, something that took me four years to do. And all the row officers really resisted it the fourth, the first time, was the employee survey. Remember, I just did here, uh, was a week or so ago, the quote unquote, the sensing sessions.
Yes.
For recruitment and retention.
Yes.
Well, really, that was something that was again, a day one motions about doing an employee survey. To try to find out what's important to you, to the employees. What's gonna help us recruit people? What's gonna help us retain people? All those little issues. It's interesting. It is almost like when I I sent out an email uh to the row officers about it. Like, this was about two years ago. I should print out all those emails. Every one of them, it looked like they all sat down together and they all, except for one. Sent me an email saying, no, they didn't wanna participate in any employee survey because. Uh, what was it? They didn't have a say in what the questions are gonna be and and things like that, you know? But guess what? Didn't you guys all just show up a week ago? So I got you in the end, you know? And guess what? And all your people are going to a union, so you don't have a say at all. You know, because it just formed two more unions.
Really? Well, see, that's.
Yeah, two more unions are forming.
That's what happens when you have unhappy employees and I will tell you, uh, let's go back to nineteen eighty six. When Scotty Pampa was working up at the Carbon County Prison as a corrections officer. And our warden was going down and getting raises for himself and he'd come back and we would say.
Yeah.
What did you get for us? Oh, I didn't get anything for you guys. Well, the next thing we are, we're a bunch of disgruntled people. What do we do? Pick up the phone and call the Teamsters. Hey, would you be interested in taking us on, you know?
Yeah.
So we had our vote, but that that's what happens when you have employees who are not happy.
Yeah.
May not trust the boss, you know?
Yeah.
We're gonna get some representation here and somebody's gonna get us some raises. You guys aren't doing it. But the other side of that is too, they will pay union dues. They may have some things done for them like we did, dollar an hour for the first three years.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, hey, you're maxing out. We're only getting you twenty cents now, you know?
Right.
And then they become disgruntled again.
Again, right, the grass is always greener.
Unions are always not the answer, but in in this situation, I can say I I can't blame them.
Well, you know what? Interestingly enough, the sense is there were more people actually opposed to the union. Than actually interested in the union. However, those opposed didn't vote, didn't go to the vote.
Oh, you're kidding? Oh, wow.
So if you check the numbers.
Mm-hmm.
It was just slightly more than a handful of individuals voted.
Interesting.
It's all the individuals who didn't go and vote and say no, you know, or heard the feedback from folks. And we know the numbers, you know, we we know the numbers and stuff like that.
So now they'll be stuck with the union that they really don't have to join, I guess, that they don't want to.
Right, that's what I'm saying, right, you know, cause they'll still be represented, right? They'll still be represent, to some point.
Yeah.
Right, you know, you know, how energetically, well, we shall see how how they do. But it's interesting, you mentioned the Teamsters, cause you know, the the prison union has changed from Teamsters to the N C E U. You know, so that's something that's still really in 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 progress, you know, that full transition taking place to the N C E U and stuff like that.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, it was odd when we would have contract discussions, our our Teamster representative would come to the meeting and wanna talk about truckers. And guys getting blown off the top of trucks versus, you know, what these correction officers are up against. Cause the Teamsters weren't really involved in that, you know, side of the employment of C O's and.
Right, yeah.
So it it used to be interesting is that we would go and sit and watch the top talks evolve.
Yeah.
And our rep would all of a sudden just start talking trucking. With no, no, no relationship to trucking whatsoever.
Yeah.
So uh, let me ask you this though, Chris, you did, you you kind of, you took some tough positions and you resisted some things that you were pretty successful in resisting too. Like, uh, I believe back in the early part of it was the windmills that were trying to come to Pen Forest, you know?
Yeah, the what, you know, it's interesting, I somehow, you know, I started with the, you know, helping advocating against the wind fill. Windmills in Pen Forest and then, you know, I I got so passionate about it. When when the opportunity was presented to kind of be an advocate and be another opposing voice. For the ones up in Weatherly or in Packer Township.
Yeah.
You know, and and then all of a sudden, I'm starting to see kind of a conservation. Side of me come out and I take that back to my time, maybe working at Beltsville with Vince Gogel or something like that. Uh, cause these issues have become so important to me because I recognize. One of the things I love so much about this area and I think we value about this area is its natural environment. So how can we protect our natural environment? Well, you know, the aesthetics or the 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 scenic scape, the viewscape is, you know, keeping those windmills. Uh, off our ridge lines first and foremost, but then you start thinking about, well, how do we protect Mock Chunk Lake Park? And that went to, you know, basically, you know, buying mechanic property. Interesting, another opportu- another demonstration of my colleagues' failure to vote. I was pushing that issue and I believe I was actually the first one to actually raise that issue after Canick. Months after Canick had come to the commissioners. Months after Canic had come to the commissioners and asked us to sell him a little strip so he could have access. It was basically a strip across the switchback that he wanted. And right away I saw development as was going to take place. And that kind of laid the groundwork in my mind saying, at some point, I'm gonna have to fight to protect that water source and that recreational activity. So I was trying to force the borough's hand in his hand and I I had a motion uh on the on the agenda. And again, colleagues not reading, it said, assess the viability or words similar to that of actually taking that property from Canic. Declaring eminent domain for the health and safety and welfare. It didn't say take the property.
Right.
But again, it was assess the viability. Now, I will tell you, I already knew the county could do it.
Uh-huh.
It was having two people to have the I would say the intestinal fortitude out of three to say, if the borough's gonna go ahead and pass where he's allowed to have septic, the only way we're gonna protect Mock Chunk Lake Park is to take it. And I'll tell you what, I'd hate for private property to be taken from an individual, but I'll tell you what, I, that would have crossed the line for me.
Yeah.
You know, but I don't think, I I don't think one of my colleagues would have joined it. They wouldn't even, again, even though they didn't read the motion correctly. You know, they wouldn't even assess the viability
Yeah.
of declaring eminent domain to take that to protect Mock Chunk Lake Park.
Wow. And sadly, in this situation, it was really only the county commissioners that could have done this, unlike when the Jim Thorpe School District wanted to build a school across from Bear Creek Lakes.
Uh-huh.
And the community of Bear Creek Lakes is up in arms, you're gonna pollute our lake.
Right.
And they fought it and the school just caved and ended up building out at Penn Camp, you know?
Mm-hmm.
But initially, when I graduated in nineteen seventy-nine, we were told that's the future school, gonna be right there in that piece of property that's still owned by the school district. And the adjoining park, you know, was going to be the school, but the Bear Creek Lakes community made it very clear, we will fight you to the nail because you're not gonna pollute our lake.
Yeah.
You know?
Yep.
But in this situation, you didn't have people living out there.
That's right.
So it had to come back to government.
Government.
To step up and protect.
Yeah. Well, in one, one level of government wasn't prepared to do it.
Yeah.
What happened was, the only reason they ended up voting against it is because we gave them the opportunity. We created the breathing room for them to vote against it, because I have no doubt that if it wouldn't have been for county action, they would have voted to allow septic systems on on Chunk Lake Park. It may have been for three or whatever, but I think they they clearly had the votes uh to go ahead and allow septic systems to be built in that particular area.
That's sad. That's scary.
But we got those forty-five acres.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, he came to us and and sold it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, eventually, because he knew it wasn't gonna be able to be built on. So so good for us and good for the county. You know, to have forty-five acres on the other side, you know, basically that runs from basically the Jim Thorpe Summit Hill Line, maybe a hundred or so, two hundred yards, you know, past the breast of the dam. You know, that whole strip there on on the switchback side or the Mount Pisgah side, excuse me, the Mount Pisgah side and there.
How high up in the Pisgah did it actually go?
That one doesn't go all the way up. It doesn't go all the way up. But you know, the county does run that whole strip. Matter of fact, the majority of, you know, that strip that the the county owns of kind of goes about three quarters of the way up the mountain or so, but it does go up on top. Blue Angel is county property. The majority of Blue Angel, except for one little segment, uh, that's actually county property.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if someone would go up there and let's say they would take a car, drive it up there, shoot at it, create a fire and push it over the bank into Blue Angel, they would be in violation of ordinances that Mock Chunk Lake Park has and the E P and E P A laws and regulations against pollution.
Holy smokes.
Huh. I wonder if someone March twenty nineteen, does that ring a bell to anyone in the public? Huh. You know, because uh, because there's some brewing. So for you, you three who were involved, think about that, you know? You know, so, you know, yeah, I had a little coded message of warning I had to send out there
Oh, so.
uh uh to some folks and stuff like that. But yeah, the windmill fight was a good one. And again, I was just a small
Well.
portion of that, but again, I was leveraging social media.
You know.
And then I was going to the commissioners meeting. Remember, I I took to the commissioners, Bill, Tommy and Wayne. I drafted, they have a resolution not saying they were against it, but they had to protect our ridge lines.
Right, they wouldn't sign it.
They wouldn't sign.
Uh-huh.
Wouldn't sign.
But other.
Wouldn't consider.
Other municipalities throughout Carbon County did, correct?
They 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 had their own type of, yeah, I had two or three that that actually did.
Uh-huh.
I'll look at it. But the the county commissioners, you know, obviously Tommy was the the reason why they're building in Packer Township. Because when he was uh on the township supervisor, he was the one who basically opened the door uh by the resolution that they did allowing windmills up there. But but they wouldn't take a stand and yet the Carbon County Comprehensive Plan says you'll protect the 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 viewscape or the ridge lines.
Correct.
And here the commissioners wouldn't sign a document saying, we need to adhere to the Carbon County Comprehensive Plan. You know, and stuff like that, but.
Well, there was also the Save the Bells. Were were you part of that one?
Save the Bell.
Was that Saint Mark's?
Oh, well, absolutely. But but I was attacking it for Saint, not Save the Bell, S O S, Save Save Our Sanctuary.
Okay.
Right, Save the Bell. What the heck? Bell's the Saint Mary. It's Christmas time and stuff like that. Yeah. But I, interesting, uh, the, I was approaching it initially from a financial perspective.
Yeah.
That was the Susquehanna Street project, where they're gonna build the Taj Mahal, a multi-level parking garage that the public wasn't gonna be able to utilize.
Right.
So I was attacking it from financial solvency or financial fiscal conservative uh 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 nature, because it just didn't make sense in that area to do that particular. And then fortunately, um, an employee of Saint Mark's really started the ground movement and started saying, hey, wait, this is a threat. So what we kind of do is we ended up attacking that issue from two different levels and putting that, those commissioners at the time on the spot. Two things they did right before the election, May in twenty nineteen, so this would have been in April of twenty nineteen, because there was so much pressure. One, they decided that they wouldn't do the Susquehanna Street Project. And they they scaled back the E O T C, the Emergency Operation Training Center. And they did that solely for political reasons, because there was just getting hammered, hammered, hammered. And again, yeah, I played a role in that, hammering them, but there were others also who really brought to bear a a lot of advocacy from from different people. Matter of fact, uh, the first guest that I hosted on Carbon Matters Live Streaming happened to be the leading advocate of that effort to protect Saint Mark.
Hmm.
You know, so good for her.
Absolutely.
You know, and yeah, that was a big one. Thank you for bringing that one up because that was an important one. But again, that was that was the free office and stuff like that.
Yes, it was.
But that was really good. You know, uh, let me think of a couple other things here, Scott, that that I want to ensure we hit upon also.
Sure.
Um. I I I was doing a little reflection today after the commissioner's meeting too. And I I was reflecting partly on on my colleagues who I've worked with the last four years. And I was thinking, you know, publicly, how I presented myself. And and I always thought that and and this kind of came about halfway through, I think, my term, I started saying, you may not agree with where I stand, but you'll always know where I stand. And and that was one thing I think I I did really well. I was always out there saying, this is what I believe, this is why I believe it. Again, based on that research or these values or whatever I have. And this is where I stand. If you disagree with me, call five seven zero five zero three sixty-seven eighty or email me at C four commissioner Gmail or C L Lukasevic at carboncounty.net. And that's one thing about my colleagues, I don't think there was consistency of knowing where they were on issues.
Sure.
Because they weren't out there publicly ensuring that transparency. I always thought maybe they were giving themselves wiggle room, you know, as as good politicians do at sometimes.
Yes.
You know?
There's no doubt.
Yep.
You you have hit the nail on the head with this one.
Yep.
I believe that, and this is what separated you from the rest of the group, is I believe that they are politicians and they're afraid to take a position one way or the other, and they will leave that wiggle room that you refer to for them to not maybe change their position, but just the way they present it to people is.
Maneuver space.
Yes.
Yeah, and sometimes that's good, but 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 my position was as an elected official, before I go into a meeting, you should know where where I'm going on a particular issue.
Yeah.
And while I will tell you, interesting, because my, and I knows all my followers, so I know who is watching what I post and stuff like that, uh. If you didn't hear it in in a meeting, you definitely saw it on social media or you saw it on my dry erase boards, because all my thoughts were there. Like I said, some of them were coded.
Yep.
You know, no doubt, but every thought, every direction I was going was publicly brought out there in some form or fashion. It may have been in a comment I made to a Times News article. I think I'm a gold star member on Times News on their Facebook group or something.
You've got a top badge.
Yeah, top badge and stuff like that, because I'm always posting, you know, the video or link into the video clips of the actual meetings so people get the full picture or I'm I'm challenging things that may have been written, which I didn't think did do justice to what someone might have presented at a meeting and and stuff like that. But you definitely, if you were astute, an astute person or an informed voter, you always knew where I was at, you know? You know, for better or for worse, you know?
You know what, Chris? I kind of, I approached my position in school board
Yeah.
the same exact way. And I feel at times it hurt me.
Of course it does.
At at the same time, I just felt like, hey, honesty is what you're gonna get from me.
Right.
And it's best to know where I stand, you know, at least you're gonna get the God's honest truth out of me.
Yep.
Rather than for me to say to your face, oh, I agree with your position when I really don't.
Yeah.
And a lot of people do play that game, unfortunately, and you know, they have no problems getting reelected.
Right, exactly. There there's a cost to being honest.
There is.
And 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 transparent and stuff like that.
Although you would think that that would give you an advantage.
Right.
It does not.
It doesn't. And it's interesting, and I'm gonna throw some data out there, because I'm a data person. Talk about transparency. You know, and again, I've been leveraging social media, primarily Facebook, but also YouTube, LinkedIn, Twitter and Instagram. Twitter and answer, Twitter started about two years ago. Instagram about a a year plus ago, but Facebook the whole time, uh, YouTube. You know, on Facebook, I I put four hundred and eighty videos on my Facebook page, eleven hundred and fifty-five informative images. I I published over four hundred official wa, video live streams. I did over, I had over more than twenty guests on Carbon Matters live streaming. And that was all about trying to bring county government into people's living, right? And again, like we talked about at the beginning, about, you know, again, who's gonna go, who, what employed person is gonna have time on Thursday at ten thirty to go to a commissioners meeting?
Correct.
No one.
Right.
But the fact is then, let's at least make it available to them so that if they wanna be an informed voter, they they have the opportunity. And and I tried to make it a little more interesting and to provide a, at least a personal perspective by leveraging social media and nearly nineteen hundred uh followers that go out there. And I will tell you, the other number I looked at that I haven't put here, I've spent thousands of dollars, right? Thousands of dollars pushing those Facebook posts throughout Carbon County using booths. I would do that all the time. Whenever I thought it was an important issue, I would go in, boom, 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 let me pay for four days of getting it pushed into everyone's feed. And I apologize if I annoyed you with every week, there was another, you kept seeing something from Chris Lukasevic being forced into your feed because I was paying for it, but but I was, it was part of, you know, putting my money where my mouth was when it, when it came to transparency.
Transparency, you know, you nailed it. There is the word, there is the word, all words. Transparency and this, the 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 data that you are
Yeah.
spewing out right now is nothing other than transparency, you know?
Yeah.
And uh, transparency in government, we need a whole lot more of it.
Yeah.
We.
Yeah, I was trying to think, so, you know, as we kind of wrap up maybe a little bit, I was thinking about, you know, regrets, uh, if there are any real regrets. I will tell you, I regret having done a mea culpa when I published a check on social media.
Yeah.
I shouldn't apologize for that, because I knew when I did that, that the county was already sending out under, from the commissioners and the offices of honor, seven hundred and fifty-plus checks a month to people we didn't know from accounts that could have been compromised. The account from the check that I published was an uncompromisable account. It was what's referred to as a holding account, meaning we take general fund money, we shift it into this other account, and then it just pushes out from there. No money can come in, nothing can be pulled out of there. It's just a holding account. And so, for that reason, and then I didn't even, at the point, I didn't know, but I learned probably the day after, another office actually sends out checks daily to criminals
Hmm.
from from a a an office that quote unquote is associated with the courts.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so what I did, like, that was a dumb thing, because I'm not pretty good. The fact is, it provided no risk to the county, literally at all. It was politicized by obviously my colleagues. I was disappointed in a friend and a colleague who made a comment, uh, an individual who for years allowed a clerk of courts to steal money and didn't do anything, right? And so this individual who who held a a row office made a public comment about he was so concerned about this, when the fact is, should have been more concerned about that individual was stealing money for ten years from the county because you and other row officers and commissioners did absolutely nothing to stem that theft. I didn't say it. The other thing I probably should have said at that time, there's a row officer who comp, the person who who raised this issue at that meeting, her office compromised sealed legal documents of individuals by putting their P I I in an email. And I kept my mouth shut. And as she was speaking, I was sitting there saying, should I bite my tongue or should I go go on the the offense and attack?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because these were sealed doc, sealed cases, right, that no one should know in that office. And what I did when that that occurred, because I was part of that distrib, email distribution. What I did, I wrote, I emailed back to the individual who did that and I said, hey, I think you should be aware of what you just did. You should take actions to correct that. I didn't go to the Times News or something. No, I said, hey, there's an issue. Take care of it. It can be corrected. You know, that's how you handle things as professionals. Not saying you hide things, but you know, the first thing you do, you go to the individual and say, hey, I have an issue with you. Or I have a problem.
Well, Chris, there's no doubt the disclosure of that check, that whole situation, that was just a political debacle.
Oh, yeah.
That's what it was. And and I know this because, you know, of course, you're well aware that I was attacked at the Carbon County Fair.
Yeah.
Because I was there supporting you.
Yeah.
How about that? You go, you go to a function at a county fair
Yeah.
in support of a candidate.
Yeah.
And I am attacked, which was just crazy, you know? And I mean, that's where we are in politics. And I mean, that's where we are in politics, and I think that's sad, and that's what I call Carbon County politics.
Yeah.
I hope it's not that way everywhere else, you know, but we. We saw shifts, okay, when we were younger. A Democrat was guaranteed to win an office in Carbon County. Along comes Donald Trump, and all of a sudden, the Republican Party is growing stronger and stronger, and people wanna be Republicans and. Many Democrats who I knew were longtime Democrats become Republicans, you know, but uh. The mentality is what really scared me.
Yeah.
And it really came to light for me when I was invited to the Lincoln Dinner.
Mm hmm.
And I sat there that night wondering. This is my party, I mean, I've been a Republican from the day that Charlie Roldoner, who was a Democrat. Called me at the Carbon County Prison and says, if you're gonna be a county employee, don't you think you should at least be a registered voter?
Right.
And like, you know, my family was always strong valued Republican, so I registered as a Republican and been one since. But when you go and sit in a meeting like that and you're attacked at a fair, you know, that, what are the values of this party?
Yeah.
Very scary, you know, and then they, you got somebody coming along like a Chris Lukasevich, could really help us grow. And we're gonna resist them, we're gonna fight them, and you're gonna release crazy things, oh, he, this check, we're gonna damage him as a person, you know? It was just politicized, and I saw it as as a, you know, a political circus.
Oh, it was.
Is what it was, you know?
Yeah, but I, but again, I going back to it. I should not have apologized for it, I I. I took ownership of my mistake is what I did, and that's what, that's how I was brought up in the military. You accept the mistakes, you take corrective action a- and and you move on, but in this particular instance. You know, hindsight, seventy two hours after, said, no, absolutely, should have just went. Boom, on the offensive and attack, attack, attack.
Yeah.
Uh, a- as tends to be my nature uh at times, and my my, maybe it's my passionate assertiveness. As I like to refer to, what I'd like to do, do you have any last questions?
Um. Let me just check.
Comments?
My, well. No, I think I've covered most of what I wanted to to do, there is one last thing, I, you know, when we talk about money. As long as, I know we're running short on time, but I I just wanna hit on. The amount of revenue that is being generated by the parking that is allowed in the county lot. And by tourists, you know, this is tourism, they they are basically providing a huge shot in the arm. To the county's financial, you know. Um, projections for for anything, where can we borrow money from, or borrow it from the parking fund? There is a huge amount of revenue there. I know the county is not really in the tourism business, they don't run the trains, they don't do anything like that. So they generously open up their parking lot, which is. Chris, the December that we just went through was like a December, in the four years that I have worked in in the parking department, I never saw anything like it. It it it's just growing and growing larger, now I know you're moving on, but this is the one thing that. I don't quite understand, and this also comes from my experience in the school board, governmental agencies that don't work together. I just don't quite understand, I mean, this is a situation here with this parking, we saw what happened in October, where people really have to. Get together and say, what are we gonna do? You can't limit the people coming in, you just can't say, we're shutting our 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 town down, you know? Don't you let anybody in that parking lot, they have to keep going through, that to me is like the clearing Marshall Wall, you know?
Yep.
You just don't do stuff like that, but everybody needs to sit down at the table and figure out, what are we gonna do? Because it's getting larger and larger, but the county right now is a huge benefactor because.
Yep.
Of the parking.
Yeah, and we're about, we will be, um, depending on what occurs the next three days. But we are seventeen thousand dollars away from one point one million dollars. Which is a high, and and that is due to, it's not due to the kiosk. It's due to the number of people that are using the kiosks, and the increase that's coming in.
Yep.
Uh, and stuff like that, and I think. That is a result of, again, you know, I I using the term lately, the overtourism. Too many people coming in. And, you know, our strategy for promoting Jim Thorpe has been so effective.
It sure has.
That has done it, but the the problem is, we haven't had a strategy for managing tourism. We've only had a strategy for promoting tourism, and now we're in that position where, you know, how do we get the genie back in the bottle? Where all interest groups uh can have their needs met, the tourists. The business interests, and importantly, those of us who live here and have to put up with. Increasingly challenging difficulties or inconveniences associated with. Something that if well managed. Is a good thing. Um, and again, I don't know the solution, I I truly don't, you know, I'm advocating for. Smart people to come together and develop a tourism's management strategy. Part of that might be pulling back on the amount of advertising that does take place, we're we're over promoting. The place, uh, we're we're at the point of saturation, you know, I always say, we don't have enough restaurants, we don't have enough restaurants, we don't have enough parking. We don't have enough activities, uh, and we don't have enough physical space.
Well, I'm gonna go back to social media on this one, because it is a main player in this, even even though the Pocono Mountain Vacation Bureau has expanded their horizons. On where they are now promoting Jim Thorpe. In September, I was in the Jim Thorpe Market.
Yeah.
And the woman who works there said to me, I know you work over at the parking, she said, I just wanted to show you what you're in for next month. She pulled up a TikTok video that was on social media about Jim Thorpe, over two million views. And all of these people were commenting how they're coming to Jim Thorpe, and she said, they're coming, and guess what, Chris, they came, and they're still coming.
Yep.
The I've never, from from October, November, December, saw in my years working down there. Three months, like the three months we just had, it was like, ooh, I mean, just this week alone, your, the parking lot's been full every day.
Yeah, I've been sitting there when I'm standing at my computer, because to take a break from the screen, I'll just look out the window. And just see the cars coming in and out, you know, I'm glad you hit on this, because, you know, we're talking about. The visitors and the revenue that they bring specifically, the what is now the one point one million, which is a historical high. Uh, 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 for the county, it's interesting, sometimes when the weather's not perfect, you actually. Make actually more money than a beautiful day, because you get more turnover in the daily lot.
Correct.
Versus people just hanging out for eight hours and not opening spaces.
Yep.
But. You know. People would ask me, you know, what are the two things probably you're proudest of? First and foremost, I'm gonna say, you know, in general, overall, it's how hard I work to accomplish. The vision that I laid out and how successful I think I was in accomplishing as much as I possibly could. Uh, given the situation that I had to work in, but if I had to look at specific things, it would. Go into the transparency in government and then trying to educate the public about county government. To include the county government one O one presentations I do, plus all the social media, but secondly. The railroad sale, that was so important to me, I saw probably even two years or so. Before I ran for office, went to a couple railroad commission meetings, which almost nothing, nothing is done there except paying bills. You know, I knew that. Carbon County Government. Could not run a railroad, and matter of fact, we are making a few tens of thousands of dollars on it each year from freight. That Andy Muller, who was leasing the railroad for decades, would would provide us based upon the amount of. Freight that went across our nineteen mile railroad, so I told myself. I believe in privatization of the railroad, and Al Lubkey uh in September twenty nineteen. Set up a meeting for me with uh Reading and Northern Railroad, Andy Muller's team. Uh, and and Wayne Michelle was leading this particular roundtable discussion. And they sold me on their vision. For their railroad. And they talked specifically about their lease of of the Carbon County Railroad. Uh, the issues with it being a lease. Uh, it brought to my attention the inability of the counties, the inability. Of or lack of expertise or lackability to maintain it.
Sure.
Uh, because again, you lease an apartment to someone, right, you as the owner are responsible for maintaining it. That railroad needed millions of dollars of upgrades, the county couldn't do it, so on that day in September, I said. I'm gonna make that sale happen, and I made, I made that sale happen, and I tell you. What I love so much about having made that sale happen is. No one knows that I actually made that sale happen, but I'm gonna tell you that myself. And one individual from the railroad made that sale happen, regardless of what other people may think or say. Or you may. Say your role in that sale was, there were two people, one from the railroad or one from the county who made that happen. But what was so important about that wasn't wasn't about helping the railroad. It did help the railroad, but it also helped Carbon County i- in this way. One, I'm gonna say, half the Kovac plant wa- was purchased by the railroad, so it's not lame dormant. And you're gonna see more movement up there of railroad employees.
Mm hmm.
Uh, who are gonna use that particular side of of the KME plant, and you can see the changes that are taking. Place up there, so again, it's not lame lame dormant. Importantly, though. What's driving the parking revenue? Is that train.
Oh, absolutely.
Train is driving it, and once Andy made additional investments, in-kind investments of already a couple million dollars. Into the railroad tracks in Carbon County alone, and he is only required to make one point seven million dollars of in-kind investments. He's far exceeded that, he started running additional trains, right? So again, there is a side effect to that, you know, over tourism and over crowding. But now we have trains coming from Pittston, we have more trains that are running from the Reading Outer Station. Uh, and things of that nature coming to Jim Thorpe, and again, as these people come. And visit on a train that's keeping the cars out. But what has happened is that word of mouth, you know, I'd love to come back to Jim Thorpe, and the next time they come. They're not necessarily coming on the train, but they're coming on the car and they're parking in the county lot, and they're raising one point one million dollars. Which is one point one million dollars less in taxation, and that's what I talked about revenue, you know?
Yep.
And and we did, you know, and part of that revenue too was, you know, and and in your time when we were updating, we did raise the prices a little bit more. You know, uh, primarily that has impacted tourism. Because the fact is, when it comes to the 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 hourly rate, we're just matching the borough of Jim Thorpe's rate, you know? Uh. And I gotta mention, two hours validated parking, if you're a county citizen, you have an issue or you wanna. Pre-schedule an appointment with one of the offices other than the district attorney, district attorney never signed on to the the program. But every other row office, department, the courts. You go ahead, call, you can get a special code for two hours of free parking to go do county business, private county business.
Absolutely, and as an employee who works in that lot, I am seeing more and more of it used, and when people come in. And they say they're here to conduct county business, I will always inform them, the next time you come, call that office and get a code.
Get a validated parking, so we are, and it's like, we work together with the post office.
Yes.
Right, we we got, we heard from individuals, we work together with the post office to get a spot for county residents and others. Were using the post office to have a dedicated space.
Absolutely.
Another great coup.
Hey, Chris, I see it utilized all the time, I will, I will watch that when I'm working in the lot, I will watch out here, and I will see residents. Pull in there, go to the post office, do their thing, they're glad to have that spot, they are, one spot is all they need, you know?
No, that works out good, yeah, let me just show one little thing, I'm gonna do a quick screen share here.
Sure.
Uh, this was actually supposed to broadcast. Uh, at the commissioners meeting today, but due to. Technical difficulties there, it didn't go, so let me pull this up. Make sure, so this is talking about. Those, what I would say is those issues, actions, results, that I had a decisive role in. So as it finishes up, I want to give credit to the blasters, uh, and for their rendition of of so long. Uh, uh, baby, a a goodbye, but the fact is, you know. In four years. I. Well, listen, be humble, have had a significant impact. I've achieved what I wanted to achieve. I paid the debt. Uh, that I had. And as I've always said, a debt is like a mortgage, and once that mortgage is paid, you don't keep sending the check to the bank. And in my four years, I paid that debt, and that debt was the payback for, you know, being brought up here in the values, the work ethics. The beliefs and values under which I was raised uh in this community. So I've done what I intended to do on my first term in office, and I'm happy and content.
Absolutely, you know, you have, Chris.
Yeah, thanks.
And I, on behalf of everyone in Carbon County and myself, I just wanna thank you for everything that you have done for this county.
Thanks, Scott, and thank you for being along on the ride.
It's been a fun ride, it has, I've enjoyed it, and uh, can I ask one last question?
Yeah, of course.
Um, is there a future in politics or?
If if, well, I I did make a promise to my mother. If she reaches her hundredth birthday. Uh, I I would run for office again. Not ruling out any other run at any other time, but I did make the promise to her, she reaches a hundred, and. That is what, three years away, Maggie? Yep, uh, that that I would uh uh run for political office again, now that could be dog catcher, but. I I promised her, uh, I I would definitely run and stuff like that.
Well, it's been a fantastic, I'm gonna say, five years, six years, actually, almost six years in the making, and it's been an enjoyable ride for me. And actually, it is what. Pushed me to want to become involved in government myself, and I I decided to make a run for school board, and, you know, I believe that was also. Very well and successful, and just like you, I was straightforward with people and honest, and I believe that's, you know.
Yeah.
A- again, repaying the community for what they invested in me, and I remember you saying that right from the get-go. I'm doing this to repay the community for what they invested in me, and I believe we certainly, we got our 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 worth out of it.
Right, that's right, I I think what we both did, right, the the citizens. Right, that's right. I I think what we both did, right, the the citizens we serve. Got a return on their investment.
Absolutely.
You know, when whatever that was, whatever that investment was, they got a positive return on it, be it. Uh, your role in the school board or mine as a a county commissioner, and again, uh, two kids from up on the hill making a difference.
Absolutely, and if I have one word to anybody out there, be involved.
Yep.
Pay attention.
Yep.
And really follow what's going on in your government, because it does impact you every day.
Yep.
And to sit back and think that it doesn't is really a miscalculation on your end.
Yep, good night. All right, good night, everyone, have a happy new year.